To be below for this council meeting. For closed session, six o'clock, roll call please.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Bridge.
Here.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
Present.
Oral Communications. They waiting out in the lobby? Did you lock the doors? So we have two items going into closed session. Public employment. The city manager. A conference with labor negotiators, city designated representative Jeff Malawi, city attorney. For the city manager. Of the city manager. Alright, we'll see nobody coming for oral communications, we'll close that and we There we go. Alright, we're back from closed session. Back to open session, roll call please.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Bridge.
Here.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
Present. Report on any action taken in closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor, the city council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda. One, public employment item, one, labor negotiations. Council gave direction to staff but no reportable action was taken.
Very good. So where is Chaffin Ron? There you are. Alright. Please stand and join me in invocation following that, the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, Lompoc. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Distinguished guests. Appreciate you being here and being in agreement with me. Father, we are here together because there is much business to take care of and at times, Lord, we seem to be limited with our wisdom and our understanding, so we're asking you to join us in the affairs of our city, our government, and citizens. I want to thank you, Lord, for our city manager. Thank you for our police chief and our fire chief, and I thank you for the men and women in these departments that are, they put their lives at risk for our safety. And even tonight, Lord, I ask that you bless the fire department personnel and our police department, Lord. Watch over our city as we are here together. Ask, Father, for your blessings, your peace, your understanding. I want to thank you especially, Lord, for citizens of Lompoc and how those that are here. I pray blessings in your household. I pray that there be peace here tonight. We ask, Lord, that you lead and guide us in the affairs of the business of our city in Jesus' name. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance unified by the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, couple presentations. One for Wendy, come on down. How many years? Started when you were 12? Ask them about these hiring practices, right? So, a proclamation honoring Wendy Nesby for her dedicated service as administrative aide in the fire department and the Lompoc community. Whereas Wendy Nesby has faithfully and diligently served, the city of Lompoc has an administrative aide in the fires department for 18 years and two years in Parks and Recreation Department, hired at the age of 12, exemplifying professional... I made that one up. Dedication and a true commitment to public service and whereas throughout her tenure, Wendy has played an integral role in supporting the administrative functions of the fire department, ensuring the smooth and effective operation of daily tasks vital to the department's mission and whereas Wendy's attention to detail, exceptional organizational skills, and steadfast work ethic have been instrumental in maintaining accurate records, facilitating internal communications, and coordinating department schedules and reporting and whereas her reliability, resourcefulness, and positive spirit have made her a valued member of the fire department team and a trusted point of contact for both staff and public and... Still going here. Whereas Wendy's unwavering support for the firefighters and management staff has strengthened the department's ability to respond for emergencies and serve the community with the excellence, integrity and whereas her legacy of service professionalism and kindness will leave a lasting impact on the department and the city of Lompoc as a whole. Now therefore I, James Mosby, Mayor of City of Lompoc, honor Wendy Nesby and gratefully acknowledge her contributions to the Lompoc Fire Department and the Parks and Rec Department and the Lompoc community.
Good evening, Mayor Mosby, council members, and everyone here tonight. Thank you so much for this proclamation. When I first started, I honestly didn't expect this job to become such a big part of my life. But over the years, the fire department became like a second family. I've worked alongside some of the most dedicated and passionate people you'll ever meet. They give their all every single day and I've learned so much from them. It's been a privilege to contribute to a department so deeply committed to service and community safety. I want to thank the city of Lompoc for giving me the opportunity to serve. To my fire family, thank you for the collaboration, support, and friendship. I'd also like to thank Parks and Recreation for giving me my start 20 years ago. And to my husband, family, and friends, thank you for being my rock throughout it all. Thank you again for this recognition and for letting me be a part of something truly meaningful.
RRM Design Group to provide a presentation to city's permit-ready accessory dwelling unit. Been a long time waiting for this one.
I know. I'm very excited though about the ADUs, so, but congratulations Wendy, what an accomplishment. Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Rachel Hollander with RRM Design Group. Here to provide a informational update on the permit-ready ADU program that we have been working on with the city. So this is a follow-up, if anyone tuned into the Planning Commission presentation in July, this is a very similar presentation, tried to incorporate some of the questions that we got at the commission meeting in July. Look forward to any questions at the end of tonight's presentation. This is just a quick little agenda of what I plan on covering in the presentation, little bit of background on the state law regarding, state laws regarding ADUs. The housing elements play into this particular program, ADUs in Lompoc, some benefits of the program that we've seen across other jurisdictions that we've developed plans and a pre-approved program for. Wanted to highlight the context study that our team at RRM did and completed to help inform the ADU plans themselves, which I'll review on the draft plans today. And then just touch on next steps and like I said, end with some questions from the council. So here is just a little bit of background, kind of some key dates of how we got to where we are now, noting, or kind of the key dates would be the grant application date that staff applied for, the award by the Santa Barbara County Council, Association of Governments, excuse me. And then the follow-up resolution that the city council adopted to enter into that agreement with SCAG and then, sorry, SPAG. Ultimately, the permit-ready ADU program contract that was awarded to RRM in February of this year. This is a, it's not an exhaustive table by any means of documenting the different state laws that have been codified and made effective over the last handful of years. Just wanted to mainly highlight that last bill, AB 1332, which is an important bill because it took effect January of this year and it requires each jurisdiction in the state of California to develop a program for the preapproval of ADU plans. Just want to emphasize the term program. It doesn't actually require jurisdictions to create the preapproved plans themselves. I'll get into where the city has made a commitment to do that as part of the housing element, but just want to note that this is kind of the first part of the story of how most jurisdictions are creating these programs and the plans associated with the program. So as I mentioned, the six-cycle housing element, which I'm sure some of you have heard about in the last handful of years as the city diligently worked towards getting a certified housing element with the state. There's a lot of good policy recommendations in the city's housing element, but one element or component that I want to focus on is the city's commitment to accelerating ADU development in the city. It's a great way for cities to help meet their RENA numbers. And so as staff was working through with the consultant on the housing element, there are certain programs that the city committed to implementing within certain required timeframes as agreed upon with the state, and one of which was to create this permit-ready ADU program with the actual preapproved plans. So that's the distinction I qualified earlier of the bill that took effect earlier this year doesn't require the plans, but we're seeing most jurisdictions in their six-cycle housing element in the state of California wanting to prepare those plans for community members and residents to be able to, quote unquote, "take off the shelf and utilize for their purposes." And I'll get into later the benefits of why these plans help or of benefit to the community. One other thing I wanted to note is, at the end of this project, we'll not only have the plans available on the city's website, but there will be a handbook or an informational guide as well as some other publication materials for applicants, potential applicants, and staff to utilize to help streamline the process and really just educate the community of the options that they have before them if they want to utilize this program. Alrighty, ADUs in Lompoc, so just a couple of quick stats and information. ADUs, I know planners love to use acronyms. ADUs are accessory dwelling units. The city's municipal code does have a specific section of the municipal code that establishes the regulations for not only accessory dwelling units but also junior accessory dwelling units. And that municipal code will get updated over the years to comply with the state laws that I had on a couple slides back. Just wanted to note that since 2017, 55 ADUs have received certificate of occupancy in Lompoc, so that I mentioned, you know, those ADUs can help meet the city's regional housing needs assessment that each of the eight-year cycle from the housing element allows jurisdictions to utilize a certain number of their ADUs to meet their RENA numbers. And then just wanted to note, we worked with building and safety staff to get some kind of general timeframes of how long it's currently taking them to review ADU applications and how we can hopefully see some streamlined through that, through this program process since these preapproved plans will help cut down on their plan review time. So as I mentioned, my firm, RRM Design Group, has worked on at least two dozen of these preapproved ADU plans in the state. And just as we've, you know, been working with those other jurisdictions, we've seen this list of benefits to not only the city but to the community. So I mentioned, it reduces costs for developing plans and that's largely because a majority of the plan set that will be submitted to the city is, has already been pre-reviewed and pre-approved. The only things that will be, have to be reviewed on each property will be the site-specific information of where the ADU is going to be located and utility connection information and maybe if there's any other minor modifications that they want to make. It also is a huge benefit to the city, building and safety and planning staff as it helps to, you know, reduce the time involved for reviewing the plans for each application since we already have a, you know, preapproved set of plans that ideally people will, the community will be utilizing. I already mentioned that ADUs can be counted toward RENA numbers, which is great for the city to demonstrate progress towards their six-cycle housing element to the state. And then that last bullet is just to highlight that, and I'll go into further on the next slide, the context study that RRM did, completed earlier this spring to help promote consistency from an architectural character standpoint of utilizing these ADUs around the city. Alrighty, so as I mentioned, we did a context study of the different kind of parts and neighborhoods of the city, and I'll kind of share a map on the next slide of the different areas that we largely concentrated on. And, you know, we observed three common architectural characters or styles within the city. One was Mediterranean Spanish. We also saw some cottage agrarian and California ranch styles within the neighborhoods that we looked at. And so this was, you know, we really analyzed existing housing styles and typical lot sizes to help inform how we could identify the building footprint for the preapproved plans that you'll see on the coming, forthcoming slides. And ultimately, this context study and these three emerging architectural styles informed the plans that I will share shortly. So this is the context map that shows the kind of, the four quadrants that we broke the city up into and what we analyzed. And then the five images at the bottom of the slide are some typical lot dimensions that we saw duplicated throughout the different, like typical lot patterns of the city. Alrighty, so before I get into each of the six plans, we have four detached plans, footprint styles, and then we have two garage conversion. Just wanted to note that we are still working with building and safety and planning staff on finalizing these schematic plans, but they are in draft form and ready to be shared for your eyes tonight. Sorry, a little finicky. Alrighty. So we have two plant, two of the detached ADU plans that are one-bedroom, one-bath, and two of the detached, which are two-bedrooms, one-bath. It was in our kickoff meeting with city staff that we got some good information on trying to prioritize some larger units where we could, so that's where we tried to incorporate the two-bedroom, the two plans that have the two bedrooms to just respond to staff's direction. So like this one is a one-bed, one-bath. This particular perspective that's shown on the slide is demonstrating or depicting that California ranch style that we saw through our context study. Plan two is another one-bed, one-bath at 490 square feet, so that's a little larger than the previous plan that I had for plan one, which was 350 square feet. And this perspective view is showing a Mediterranean Spanish style. Plan three of the detached styles is the first of our two-bedroom plans at 640 square feet, and that perspective image is depicting a cottage agrarian style. And our last detached plan is another two-bedroom, one-bath at, it's the largest footprint at 650 square feet, and that perspective image is illustrating a California ranch style. Also, per our coordination and collaboration early on with city staff, we wanted to include two garage conversion plans as staff felt out of those 55 applications that have received certificate of occupancy, there's been a majority of garage conversions, so felt like that was a great response and directive from staff to provide if that's going to be a desirable plan type for potential applicants to utilize once the program is in effect. So this one is a studio, one-bath, and this is a typical one-car, one-car garage conversion plan, whereas on the next page is our two-car garage conversion, and it's a true one-bed, one-bath, not a studio as was seen on the previous slide. And then finally, next steps. So right now, we're at number two, maybe kind of hard to see on the screen, but it's the middle box on the left-hand side, and we're doing some informational updates of where we're at in the process to the Planning Commission. I mentioned, we presented in early July and now we're here before the city council, and we are going to finalize the schematic plans probably this month, end of summer, and work in, or move into developing the construction or permit-ready plan set that will be available for the public to utilize, the quote-unquote, "ready off-the-shelf" plans. And then number five, or the box in the middle on the right-hand side, is that ADU handbook that I mentioned will be a great resource to, to potential applicants and residents to look at the different plans available to them, i.e. the different styles that they have available, or the different footprints that meet their needs and/or their lots. And then we will return to the city council in the winter of this year with those materials and to approve the program before it's ready to be utilized by the public. And with that, welcome any questions? I might, if I'm not able to answer a question, might defer to staff if needed.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Couple of years ago, '07, '09, Encinitas had several sets of pre-done plans for ADUs and it was mentioned on the dais, "Why don't we just purchase the plans from them?" Was told these plans were not work for Lompoc, they're nothing. So it sounds like what we could have got from them for minimal fee is we're paying you a lot of money to develop. Is there a certain reason now that these plans will work? They wouldn't work seven or nine years ago, but now they work. What's the, what's changed?
So we've done that question a lot. As I mentioned, we've done at least 20 plus, maybe almost 25 of these programs up and down the state. And what our architecture and structural engineering team looks at, that we can't just take the plans from Agora Hills or Encinitas and just apply them carte blanche here in the city of Lompoc, is one soil comes in two factor. Our structural engineer will look into that as part of the plans and the foundation system.
Well, I mean, dirt's dirt and the plans are plans and compaction's compaction. That's something that happens with anything you build. Why would the ADU plan, the plan for the house matter with the dirt it sits on?
Every building application that I've processed requires a geotechnical report or soil study, especially for the detached that require a new foundation.
Sure. Did it in any other city in California too, correct?
Correct. And then the other component is that context study that I shared, that's a unique thing that we do for each community that we develop these preapproved plans for, to make sure that the styles proposed are consistent and compatible with the city of Lompoc. So the styles, we actually worked in the city of Encinitas and the styles that were proposed as part of Encinitas' project would not have been our recommendation for the city of Lompoc.
Any other questions? Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, just kind of curious. You've obviously worked with other cities that have been going through this process and standing up the infrastructure of ADUs. You had a stat, 55 have been completed or set up here in Lompoc since 2017. You probably have some reference of how many lots there are, houses in Lompoc as a percentage of, you know, per capita perhaps of ADUs to available lots even. Is Lompoc behind? Are we in line with where other cities are? It seems like a low number, seems like a lot of people would be jumping on this, but I know it's developing plans and the process too, but I'm just curious if you have any...
It's a great question, and I do have a lot of familiarity either being an extension of staff in this facet as I am today, but I've also processed even ADU applications in Santa Barbara, Slow. And I think proportionally to the city of Lompoc, 55 is actually a really strong number because I think at the end of the day, and this is my, I guess, professional opinion but also kind of personal, an ADU is still a whole separate structure if you proceed with a detached one, and it still is pretty expensive to build. You know, I have some friends that have built them on their properties and there's still hundreds of thousands of dollars to get permitted, constructed. And so I think proportionally in the city of Santa Barbara, they have a lot more to that number since 2017. But I think that's a proportional number to the city of Lompoc, so I think 55 is still a good number. I don't have a good percentage of what that is based on the number of lots off the top of my head, but I just want to convey that it, these plans are a element to kind of reduce the amount of review time, reduce the costs, the consultant costs to prepare the plans, because that's also a large expense that I don't think applicants or homeowners recognize is part of the cost. And then you also have city fees and then construction fees and, you know, I lived in a house in Santa Barbara that our landlord was doing an ADU and he, there was just a lot of delays with construction and unforeseen costs, so I think that's a reality that a lot of people are seeing when you're doing the custom ADUs that have to be designed from, you know, the initial program to what gets permitted. And so I think if, if potential applicants and homeowners are open to the footprint, the floor plans that we've designed, it's going to reduce headache time and costs.
Councilmember Bridge.
I have a couple of questions. The last block on the previous slide was public, public meetings or whatever the, what's the purpose of that meeting?
Of the what?
Can you go back a slide? Because I don't want to... Public hearing. What is the purpose of that meeting?
The purpose of that hearing is to, we'll release the handbook before the public hearing, but it's to review the construction-ready plan set and the handbook and essentially effectuate the program.
So we're hoping to take public input when we're all done?
Public input towards the, the plans themselves and...
I'm just trying to understand, we're gonna, I don't know, spend a year and a half on this program and a lot of great money...
So we start, we kicked off in March and we're hoping to have the plans and the handbook done by the end of this year.
Okay, so nine months. You're gonna spend a lot of money and work and we're gonna get to the end and ask people to comment on it? Is that, or is it just, I'm trying to understand what the public hearing, public hearing always sounds to me like, you come in here, you listen to what people say, and you incorporate it in your plans, and that seems kind of late in the process to do that, if that's the purpose. I don't know.
So we have a couple other components of the, the plan where we can reach out to designers and licensed professionals that would be preparing the plans to inform if there's any, you know, tweaks to the footprints that we have, the floor plans that we have designed. We're still working out, you know, maybe that milestone with staff, but the public hearing, this is a, I mean, this is a public hearing. I know there's not an opportunity to comment though, so I think we'll need to connect with staff and determine how we further engage the community if you feel that's a...
I wasn't trying to, I was just trying to understand, what's the purpose?
The purpose, in my understanding, is that it will be a formal decision by the council to effectuate the program, whereas this is an... to effectuate the program, whereas this is an informational item, and there's no decision required of the council tonight, nor was there at the Planning Commission meeting in July.
Okay. My next question is just your opinion, because I'm very curious about this. And you seem to be well-engaged with ADUs. How are other cities handling the parking that comes along with this issue?
The parking? Well, I have worked in a fair amount of cities that are, have coastal zone within their city limits. So within the coastal zone, which I know isn't relevant here, there are certain requirements that you still have to provide parking, even if you replace it, replace parking with an ADU. And certain local codes are a little different, like the county of Santa Barbara has some specific requirements for parking, retaining parking in the coastal zone. Now for cities that do not have coastal zone within their city limits, you know, it is part of state law that allows you to replace parking even for that of the primary unit with an ADU. I would say that most ADUs that I've worked on, that I've helped process through county of San Luis Obispo or county and city of Santa Barbara, most of my clients prefer to keep some element of parking, the off-street parking. That's, you know, if the property allows for it, usually that's in the driveway, so it is uncovered parking, but it still is giving them at least two spaces because you not only have the residence of the primary unit, but you also have residence of the ADU. And then I've also seen some clients retain parking. They don't do the garage conversion. They do a detached unit in the backyard. So they're able to keep their covered space in the parking, in the garage, excuse me. And then they'll, you don't have to designate a spot in the driveway for the ADU, but they've unofficially done that. Most jurisdictions, yeah, I don't think that's a requirement that jurisdictions would require in the plans, but they've unofficially done that as part of their own lease agreements.
So when you say the client in that conversation, that's the cities?
Sorry, I'm putting on my helping a landowner process an ADU application hat with that statement.
Gotcha, thank you.
I know parking is becoming a big problem, Santa Maria. There's a few of them that are here in town, but I guess, just looking real fast, I think Santa Maria, since that same timeframe, is over 1,500 ADUs to our 55, so we are behind. But if you look at one of the San Francisco Chronicle's newspapers from about 10 years ago, you see Lompoc's one of the seventh most densely compact urban designs. If you take out the 3,200 acres that the prison owns, so we're already very dense already. So it's, a lot of these are already established years ago that people have granny flats in the backyards. So it might be one of the reasons why you see a little bit of slowness happening in our town is we're already pretty darn dense already, and there are already a number of units that are established. Any other questions? Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
All right, moving on to the city managers' reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let everybody know that the city of Lompoc is now processing payments instead of paper checks through EFT or Electronic Fund Transfers. I encourage anybody that does business with Lompoc, the city of Lompoc, to sign up. Not only get your money faster, it's more secure. And we currently have about 3.6, so I'd love to see that number go up and get a lot more people using that system. Wanted to let everybody know, recently we had a outage of the 911 system. Wanted to remind everybody, you can always text 911, even if you're, anytime if you're deaf or hard of hearing, you can still utilize it. You don't have to call. I also encourage everybody to sign up for Ready SBC. I know I was out of town, and I was getting texts on the ways you can call 911, so I encourage everybody to use that system. This next one is, I wanted to let everybody know, August 12th, Caltrans will be closing the Lucia Canyon access to going north on One. You can see it there in red. If you want to go north, you'll have to actually go south and turn around in the village and then head north that way. They'll be doing that August 12th. Lucia Canyon Road will be closed from 6:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., and they'll also be doing some work at Constellation Road there at 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. as well, so give everybody that attention. Hopefully they'll come up with a permanent solution there instead of this temporary one. Wanted to thank the crews for going out. I know Fire Engine 351, our brush truck with Cody Lee, went out to the Gifford Fire, started August 1st, so I want to thank them for going out and finding that fire and keeping us safe. Appreciate them. Wanted to thank facilities for, they took out two old units at the police department and put in one state-of-the-art system. I'm sure the police department appreciates you as long as, me too. Next one, last one, or I've got two more, I think. Wanted to remind everybody, this is the last week for Old Town Market. It'll be Public Safety Night, along with the police car crews on the 8th, Friday 8th. And then on Saturday, they'll be having a car show at Ryan Park from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I encourage everybody to go out, enjoy that. And then finally, Solid Waste will be doing a Free Compost and Mulch Day. That'll be August 16th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Corporate Yard at 1,300 West Laurel, and that's all I'll have for night, sir.
Any quick questions for city manager? I got one real fast. The city has its own radio station. Is there a way we can give alerts, PSAs or something through the radio station, maybe?
Yeah, sure, we sure can. I think that's something we had talked about, and we'll probably utilize that up in the future events.
Okay. Not everybody runs through their cellphone continuously, so maybe that's an opportunity. All right. Moving down the list, public comment on consent calendar. We have 16's on Consent Calendar Night. We get approval of minutes, May 6, 2025, approval and ratification of expenditures, payroll of over $2 million, three vouchers, one 1.3, one 2 million, and one 1.6. Approval of amended memorandum of agreement with Santa Barbara County Office of Emergency Management regarding activation of Ready SBC alerts. And adoption of resolution number 6767, approving and authorizing execution of revised disadvantaged business enterprise implementation agreement. And number five, award a contract purchase order of amount not to exceed 1.8 million to all tech industries for purchase of electric division replacement equipment. Number six, approval of cost showing reimbursement agreement for Encinitas River Valley groundwater basin, Western Military Groundwater Sustainable Agency and Joint Powers Authority. So get public comment on any one of those six items. Get some on the six items, okay? Fireway.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, item number five. Four vehicles for the electrical department run by the city, $1.8 million. That is $450,000 each vehicle. What is the lifespan of our current fleet? Are these vehicles in dire straits? Do we necessarily need to buy all four vehicles at this time? And how long do these vehicles last? And what are we doing with our current vehicles that we are retiring? So those I believe the public should know about. Thank you very much.
Any other public? City council members want to pull any of these items?
I would like to pull item five.
Councilor Bridge pulls item number five. You have, you got to pull it, or you got small questions? Pull it.
Well, I do have questions, but when I ran over them, it seemed like it'd be more appropriate.
Okay, very good, very good. Anybody anything else on items one through six? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve excluding number five? Councilor Ball?
I'll make a motion to accept consent calendar minus item five.
I'll give a second. You wipe me right off the motion, number one. Proving them all except number five. Number five will come back towards the latter part of the meeting. You got to push about the end? I'll make the...
There we go. You got it.
Go ahead, look. That passes 5-0. So, moving on to Fire Chief, Brian Fallon, to provide a presentation on regional dispatch center for Fire Department.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We've spent a good amount of time putting this together for you all, just to give you a comprehensive view of what we're doing now for dispatch services, and so much so that we went down and took a video of what the center looks like. So those of you that were unable to make it, we were actually able to bring it back to you and then, of course, to our audience here. So it's about seven minutes. I'm going to show you this. I have a couple of PowerPoint slides, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Our communication center, and we have the privilege and opportunity to speak with Jackie Jenkins. She is our Regional Fire Communication Center Dispatch Manager. And Jackie, thank you for taking the time with us today. And just wanted to get your take on a few things, but how do you believe that this project has helped the operational area come together?
The regionalization of all county fire and EMS resources has significantly strengthened the unity and effectiveness of the Santa Barbara County operational area. This integration allowed agencies to pool strengths, reduce efforts, and ensure the closest and most appropriate resources are dispatched regardless of jurisdictional boundaries. Agencies no longer operate independently. They operate collectively with a shared mission to deliver the highest level of service to the community. Regionalization has improved situational awareness, resource management, and response times. It was a major step towards building a more cohesive, capable, connected operational area with one ordering point.
So Jackie, can you tell us how this dispatch center is different from others?
The RFCC is designed to support the unique demands of fire suppression, emergency medical services, and multi-resource management. The extensive and specialized fire and EMS training the dispatchers receive directly benefits field operations by improving resource deployment, operational support, and scene safety. They are essential part of the first responder team. They don't just relay calls, but they actively contribute to the success and safety of every incident response. The fire EMS model emphasizes closest resource responses utilizing the AVL, the Automatic Vehicle Locator, and response protocols to dispatch the most appropriate units regardless of agency jurisdiction. The RFCC was designed to incorporate many services under one roof. We have the Office of Emergency Management. We have the IT support. We have duty officers. We have the dispatchers on the dispatch floor. We have everything under one infrastructure to provide emergency medical and fire service to the constituents of the entire county.
Okay, so Jackie, as you know, emergency medical dispatching has become a large component of the way that our dispatchers are now handling business. Can you tell us a little bit about the EMD process and the benefits to our community members?
So we use both EMD and EFD, which is emergency medical dispatching and emergency fire dispatching in the operational area. That significantly enhances the consistency, safety, and efficiency of emergency responses across fire and EMS disciplines. These structured protocols ensure that all dispatchers follow standardized medically and operationally approved guidelines when handling 911 calls, resulting in a stronger and more unified system. EMD and EFD use nationally recognized evidence-based protocols to triage emergency calls. This creates consistency across the region regardless of which dispatcher answers the phone or which agency is responding to the incident. Historically, Santa Barbara County has been a frontrunner in the survival of cardiac patients nationwide. The benefits of these programs include improved interoperability across agencies. Mutual aid is more seamless. Multi-agency responses are better coordinated. Communication and expectations are aligned across departments. There's a stronger public trust. When the public receives fast, structured, and competent help from the moment they dial 911, it builds confidence in the system. A professional, consistent caller experience improves the community satisfaction and trust in local agencies.
So Jackie, previous to the RFCC implementation, we did have EMD, but from my understanding, perhaps not to the extent or the quantity that we're receiving now. So for the folks in our operational area that are calling for service, what percentage of those people are receiving EMD if it is a medical emergency?
Prior to the RFCC opening, Lompoc City received 10% of all EMD calls.
So Jackie, that's a great point about emergency medical dispatching. So from our understanding, the Lompoc residents were receiving about 10% of EMD service, which puts us at about 310 calls a year. Now 3,100 calls receiving emergency medical dispatch service. So can you explain a little bit on the benefits as it relates to survivability?
That's correct. EMD nationwide improves the survivability rate across the board for all cardiac patients. In Santa Barbara County, previously, EMD protocols are followed for the entire community of Santa Barbara and not just specific pockets like they were before. The constituents of Santa Barbara County now all receive EMD 100% of the time for all medical calls. We have dispatchers that are certified in bilingual EMD and EFD protocols. They're certified by the county of Santa Barbara to provide emergency medical instruction and emergency fire dispatching services to the Spanish-speaking communities of the county. All dispatchers go through a rigorous training program, which incorporates EMD, EFD, CPR, life hazard safety, fire operational procedures, medical protocols, working knowledge of mutual aid, and multi-agency coordination. Our dispatchers are trained just to focus on fire and emergency medical service procedures, making it one of the leaders in regional dispatch centers across the country.
So Jackie, we're making our way through the RFCC right now. Can you tell us where we are currently?
This is our expanded dispatch room, which also focuses on training as well with, for our dispatch academy. When there's a major incident that impacts the dispatch floor, we take it off the floor and move it in this room so that we can focus on ordering resources, and everything for that incident remains in this room, so it doesn't impact the daily operations of the dispatch floor. So in the, let's say there is a incident, a major incident in Lompoc City, we would move that incident off the floor, move it in here. We would staff all these stations with personnel to order resources and manage the incident from this room.
So in any emergency situation, it is necessary and essential that all the people who are deployed in the field, they are in constant communication with the dispatchers, with anyone else that they need to talk to, and this is where we manage all of that from. All the communications are available from this data center, and that, I think, is one of our top objectives, to keep the communications going all the time.
So we've made our way to the Regional Fire Communication Center Dispatch Floor. If you look behind me, there are five stations, each staffed with personnel that are capable of EMD and EFD service. This is also overseen by a dispatch supervisor that is also off to my left. Behind that, we do have fire captains that operate as duty officers to weigh in on particular operations, resource, and aircraft ordering. Okay, thank you. So I just want to run... Check, okay. What I want to do now is just kind of capture some of those themes that were part of the video, that are some of the main features of what we're... that are some of the main features of what we're getting now. I came to the department about two and a half years ago now. When I came here, this project was already in process and moving forward. The way that we saw this as a command staff and as a fire department was exactly what we have up there, that the establishment of the Regional Fire Communications Center for us was progression in fire and EMS delivery for the city of Lompoc. So there was advancements in this particular project that brought us into what would be industry standard today. So what does that impact to the Lompoc Fire Department's service delivery system? We're using the newest methods to provide premier service to the residents of Lompoc. This is something that we talk about in the Fire Department often, is how can we keep establishing new procedures and processes and shoring up the ones that we have to continue to provide what we see as premier service to the folks that are calling. As you heard in the video, it's a fully comprehensive medical aid, EMD dispatch, and EFD. So the EMD is an enormous component that we'll get to here in just a couple of slides. As you heard in the video, we used to receive 10% EMD service. Now every call, every time someone calls 911, that interrogation to give pre-arrival instructions is occurring on every call. So that's certainly new for us. The other addition to this is through the regional dispatch system, the op area, operational area, is continually covered in all participating cities through move-ups and other options. The other thing that we look at is it's a pathway that opens up for us to provide enhanced services in the future, particularly groundwork for advanced life services, which would be paramedic services. As you heard in the video too, the one of the differences in our transition from our PD to the regional system is that these folks are specifically fire dispatchers. So they are trained specifically for fire and to deal with fire exclusively. So things like terminology, command channels, these are frequencies that we receive on incidents that are monitored now by designated dispatchers. So that for us, it's a firefighter safety component. Now we have an assigned person that is monitoring those frequencies. The EMD dispatchers are in the same dispatch center and can triage 100% of the call volume. So from before, our PD would transfer that EMS call up to the Sheriff's Department, and then the Sheriff's Department would handle the EMD portion. The other benefit for us, and you heard her say it in the video, is the Fire Department's strategy and tactics. And then working knowledge of mutual aid agreements and incident needs is tremendous for us. So these are additional enhancements to service delivery. So common communications, this is a firefighter safety issue for us. Not only now are we having common communications in the department, but this is operational area-wide. We're using the same language en route. We're utilizing the same frequencies, which was not common previously. You heard her talk about AVL and a shared CAD system. So now all of the operational area of fire departments are on the same computer-aided dispatch system. So decreases in arrival of units and dispatching of those units is happening much quicker. Another feature that's helped us is automatic move-ups. So should our units be committed to a large incident, say in our city or in the county area, whatever the case is, now there's automatic move-ups of other units from the operational area to come into our city to handle coverage until we can clear that. Another thing that we got here that is a little bit different from our previous is no more shopping for resources. So, you know, unfortunately for our PD, they would have to call around and ask if resources were available to respond to certain incidents in our city. Now that's automatically happening through the CAD system. So through that CAD upgrade, that allowed us to use a platform called Tablet Command. And we've brought this to council previously. But this is a platform that we're using now. It's a platform that all of our cooperators are on, and it's one that we can speak to one another commonly. We are people receive pre-arrival instructions, mapping, a bunch of features, hydrant locations that we weren't receiving previously. And of course, the AVL tracking that we talked about. Another feature that's an enhancement and an upgrade for our battalion chiefs is they're able to now manage that incident from that tablet on scene. And now all incoming resources are able to view that incident and know what's going on operationally. So this is just, you know, kind of what was occurring in the previous system. Our PD is busy. You all know that. Chief Martin would certainly know what the call volume is. But they were balancing between, of course, their massive call volume and balancing our call volume as well. We did not have the EMD in-house. As we talked about, it was through the Sheriff's Department, but it was only on certain call types, and those were CPR calls, strokes, cardiac calls, which equated to us about 10% calls a year, so about 310. The other challenge for us in dealing with our cooperators is we weren't able to align communications until those folks were within our city limits. And we certainly didn't know what they were doing because we didn't share the same platform. So until they showed up on scene was when we started to receive the information that we needed. This is just a picture of what the previous workload looked like. So up on top there, that was what our Lompoc PD was responsible for there on top. So taking the call, screening the call, dispatching the resources, calling the Sheriff's Department for ambulances, requesting mutual aid, you know, transferring the call over. Now with their current workload, they're answering the phone. They're determining if it's fire need or a PD need. And then they're transferring that call right over to the RFCC, allowing them to free up for more law enforcement calls. So emergency medical dispatching specialized system used by 911 or emergency call centers to manage and prioritize medical emergencies before first responders arrive. You heard her in the video talk about what the, what those medical dispatchers are required to take as far as training goes with CPR with fire protocols, medical protocols, all in an attempt, of course, to potentially provide pre-arrival instructions to potentially save a life before our first responders arrive. 100% EMD for all calls. On the third one there, just to draw your attention, American Heart Association shows that when callers receive EMD, there's an increase in cardiac arrest survivability from 4% to 10%. And I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but it is a lot. So that would be an EMD dispatcher walking that caller through CPR or whatever other emergency is occurring at the time that has to do with cardiac arrest. In our younger cardiac arrest patients, there's a 71% survivability when pre-arrival instructions are given, and that's through the EMD process. So this is just the systematic approach to the emergency medical dispatch delivery. So we talked about, of course, they call. Every call that comes from a resident Lompoc goes to our PD, and our PD transfers that call to the RFCC. They begin their pre-arrival instructions in what we would call the interrogation process. And they're not waiting to dispatch a unit. As soon as they know what the general emergency is, they are launching that unit to begin responding to the call. You see there on the fourth one over, the intent of the EMD system is to begin implementing life-saving and supportive measures to ensure the best outcome. And that EMD dispatcher will be on with that patient until the first responders walk through the door. Metric for EMD service delivery. So the targeted answer time is 15 seconds at the local level here, 95% of the time. And then we're, our goal is to have that call transferred within 30 seconds, 90% of the time, down to the RFCC once the dispatchers locally know what the issue is. These are all standards that we attempt to abide by through the NFPA 1710 sections that are listed. And then we saw that one that I just mentioned here, the quick launch. So as soon as they know what the issue is, they're launching units and continuing the interrogation process. This is just a sample of what our dispatchers are responsible for. This is what, a sample of what an interrogation card would look like. It's digital, so they can utilize that. But it's really just a pathway for them, depending on what the emergency is. There is a card per each one of those, and they will walk through that card with the patient until our first responders arrive. So how does that process aid our responding crews? It allows for better pre-planning for our firefighters on the way into the incident. They're aware of what they're going to now. Previously, they would have a call type, but really no pre-arrival notes on exactly what the issue was. They're now able to order additional resources through some of the, making better decisions through the provided notes that are coming through the system. As they're responding to the call, there's real-time notes that are taking place as the EMD process is taking place. So they're staying up to speed on that. Mapping component, which we didn't have previously, and then no more arriving blind, which is a huge deal for our responders. And I just want to play you just a minute here of an EMD. So this is an actual call from the RFCC that happened here in the village.
Fire for the next.
Lompoc was a medical transfer at 492 Milky Way in the Village. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, sir.
Hi, my mom's right here. We were eating dinner. She started choking on something.
Started choking? Okay, she's choking still?
Yes.
Okay. We already have help on the way, okay? I just need you to verify the phone number just in case we get disconnected.
805?
Perfect. I'm setting the paramedics to help you now. Stay in line with me and don't disconnect. Do not slap her on the back, okay?
Alright.
Are you with your mom now?
Yes.
Okay. How old is your mom?
29.
29. Is that her in the background?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Is she responding completely normal to you?
Yeah, she's standing up, but she's still choking.
Okay. Is she breathing normally?
Uh, no, she's like panting.
Okay. What did she choke on?
Uh, I think meat.
Okay. Are you right by her now?
Yes.
Okay. I want you to put your phone on speaker so your hands are free to help her. Okay. Look at her very closely. Tell me exactly what you see and hear her doing.
She's just like, she's pushing on her stomach and she's trying to push it out until it...
Okay. Can she breathe? Can she breathe, talk, or cry at all?
Yes, she's breathing like a little bit.
Okay. Listen carefully. I'm going to tell you exactly what to do next. Is she standing, sitting, or lying down?
Standing.
Standing, okay. Stand right behind her and put your arms around her waist. Okay?
Yes.
I want you to make a fist and grasp it with your other hand just above the belly button.
Yes.
Okay, be sure you're below the ribs and the breast bone. Do you understand me so far?
Yes.
Okay. In one quick motion, jerk hard up into the stomach, and keep doing it until she can breathe. Okay? If she becomes unconscious, tell me immediately. Keep doing it, okay?
Alright.
Hard enough. Don't give up. Keep doing it until she can breathe.
Alright.
If she becomes unconscious, I want you to tell me immediately, but keep jerking on. Okay, keep doing it. They're coming down Constellation up right now. You're doing good. Just keep doing it.
Alright.
Did somebody unlock the front door?
Yeah, make sure you unlock the front door. It's unlocked.
Thank you. Okay, they're about to arrive. I want you to keep doing it until they take over.
Alright. I'm over here.
Fire for the next.
Lompoc was a medical trans...
Okay, so once the first responders arrived on scene, that object was already removed. It was a piece of meat that she had lodged in her airway. So it's things like that, these pre-arrival instructions where they could walk them through that. And it's not just that. It's providing comfort, knowing that someone is on the other end of the line and that help is coming. You heard halfway through the call that they're coming down Constellation Way. Keep going. Make sure the door is open. So there's a lot of really important instructions that come along with this process. I'm just going to move forward on this. We already talked about that. And I'm not going to read this to you. I'm just going to explain it. But the governance that surrounds the regional dispatch system is that we have a seat at the table for this, and it's established through two working groups called the Joint Executive Committee, which is comprised of all of the fire chief partners in the operational area, and the Joint Operations Committee, which handles all of our operational decision-making. There are no decisions that are made under this agreement that are not funneled through those two entities and then ultimately landing on the Joint Executive Committee, which are the fire chiefs that are the final decision-makers for the dispatch center. So everyone that's in the operational area has an equal vote and say in how the dispatch system is being run. I'm sure you have plenty of questions, and I'm happy to answer all of them.
Counselor Strobe.
I know I asked before, right, Brad, is Vandenberg the base? Are they involved in this?
So because they're federal government, they are not. They're not on the same CAD that we are, the computer-aided dispatch. They do have portions of that Tablet Command system that they are a part of. So, but they're not intricately involved like we are. What they do for us, though, is they do respond into our city to help us on our first alarm fires, or they will provide coverage for us.
My question with this was strictly financial, as in the budget item, because this increased, I think, it had talked to me about a $330,000 expense, ended up being $368,000. And the difficulty we were having is, you know, the amount of revenue that we get in new every year is very limited. And the fire budget in, let's say, the last 10 years has more than doubled. And you're out a $10 million a year budget when we don't have. Had two new houses last year. You got about $2,000 more in new sales tax. So it's very limited on this. And my concern that I have, and as I'd mentioned to you before, was when we have these type of agreements, because not only, you know, you have all this, but you're now first responding, like say the windmills. Lompoc would be responsible, be the first responders out there, correct? The new windmills all the way out in Agalito Canyon?
So if there's, if the unit is closest, then we would respond to that. It doesn't negate any jurisdictional responsibility that we would have or that the county would have either. Just for the sake of numbers, because I do know that that's important to you as far as it being reciprocal or not. I did pull the data from last year just to check it for myself, to know if it is equitable. We, the county came into our city 176 times last year. We went into theirs 133 times. And this does not include the rescue ambulance that really is helping the ambulance provider right now, but still providing us care. So yes, that is a possibility under our auto aid agreement. That is a component of that.
That's my concern, is if you're going all the way out in Halama Road, you know, it's a lot longer trip than then just coming into Albertson's parking lot. And that's my concern, are they paying their fair share? I mean, the county is collecting the monies for this. They're collecting it through the property tax component. And understanding what's going on with Lafco, anytime there's an argument or discussion about annexations, as the Richards Ranch discussion that happened here last month at Lafco, the concern was, well, county was two tenths of a mile closer than the city. And so therefore, who's going to pay for them? And understanding what's going on with this, I just want to make sure everybody's paying the fair share. And that's talking with the city attorney, and he got a simple, I forwarded you as well about making sure that we align. Because as Lafco states, if you increase your territory or your people outside the area by 25%, then that would trigger out a sharing agreement. Now granted, this is a little bit of a gray area, and I think it would probably be appropriate that we bring this back so we can address it. Maybe we can Lafco to write, maybe they can approve it or not approve it and say, hey, yeah, you probably should go through a sharing agreement. And my great idea, I mean, they talked about it years ago, like EMT-certified dispatchers over here. That was a discussion... That was a discussion 2015. It's been for a long time, to try to do it at the smaller level. And we've been trying to do this since 2017, from what I gather. And my whole concern is to make sure, and if you're getting paid mileage for going all the way out the end of Halama versus them coming in, this is make sure that everybody's paying their fair share, and that we have the, you know, the proper alignment and sharing that's going on. That's my biggest concern about this. It's not through the dispatch facility. But another question that came up is, and I witnessed this before, there is a 15 to 30-second delay when somebody makes a call now to 911, if it becomes an ambulance needed response. I notice it varies. It's significant. You say 95% of the time, it's only about 15 seconds?
The objective is to answer it within 15 seconds on our local side, and then have it transferred within 30 seconds.
Yeah, that's a significant amount. I noticed with the person I was with, when they made the call, they almost thought they got hung up on, and then it was being transferred down to there. So was that affected when the fiber optic line was cut too? Was that...
We had two recent incidents, one with the Ventura County line, and then there was a line that was cut within our county that created some issues. I'm not sure which day that person called. But there's also issues with concurrent calls and other things that could probably be factors in that that might have caused the delay. So that is the goal 90% of the time. Of course, we hope and strive that they would, you know, be closer to 100%, but that's the minimum standard is what we're asking. And if I can address the Lafco issue...
Yeah.
Because I was. I was privy to some of that information as well, and through some of my own research. With Lafco, Lafco does not, and you know this, does not dictate any of our automatic or mutual aid agreements. And you were right, there was two exceptions. It was one for 25% of a taken jurisdiction or 25% of personnel that were contributed to that department. We're definitely not at the 25%. So if we were, if we were at 25% or more, then we would have to enter a fire protection agreement, according to Lafco stipulations. We're not at that, so it ends up falling under an auto aid agreement. And if we talk about, you know, responding to Halama, which I understand, that's a concern because it's far. I actually had my battalion chief pull that data. Last year, we responded three times. So, yes, it's something for us to be aware of. But another component of our auto aid agreement is when we respond to these areas, if our battalion chief, per our agreement, determines that we cannot send a unit to a particular call, he does have the discretion to refuse some of those calls or come up with another solution that would be viable. So even though we are dedicating services to small, outlying areas, we're always aware that our primary is to be conscious of, you know, the city of Lompoc. So that's built in our response planning. That's built through our auto aid agreements, is that we will never abandon the city of Lompoc to send resources outside of that.
And I know at the shelter out here, you guys are usually always the first ones out there too, and that's several times a week here.
Yeah, we do. We go out there quite a bit, and they help us in areas like Allen Hancock, where they're closer. And so, I mean, the number is, quite honestly, sure, they are what they are. We do receive more aid from them. The other thing I would just... I would caution us with, and probably a year and a half ago or so, we had a vegetation fires about 10 acres up by the college. We received county resources with aircraft, hand crews, engine companies, at a zero-dollar cost. The cost of that helicopter would have devastated our city for the amount of time that we used it, or, you know, I mean, for sure, a bill of $100-plus thousand. Right now, we receive all those services for free. If we were to implement some kind of system where it was assistance by hire every time we respond for them and they charge us, they will most definitely reciprocate that. So I would caution against it, quite honestly.
My concern again, like the windmills. Did you guys get any comment about the windmills they put out there? I mean, you know, there's only a matter of time before something happens out there, and you'll be asked to drive all the way out in Megalito Road to the...
Yeah, I'm not aware. I mean, my battalion chief's here. He could probably weigh in on that. I mean, I know we've had incidents in Megalito before, and the reason we respond is because it can touch our jurisdiction. So, I mean, honestly, you know, the modern-day fire service is built up of mutual and auto aid services because we're small and most departments can't do it alone. I mean, we're, at any given time, we're two engines and one rescue in service a day, nine people. So we certainly rely on those outside operators.
Okay. Let's go to Councilmember Bridge.
Thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of questions. I'm not sure I fully understood the 10% versus 100%. Are you saying that once the person is on the call normally or in current conditions, they get hung up on? Or why is it 100% and only 10% where we're doing it? I didn't get it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so in the previous system, whenever someone calls 911, it always goes to the PD. And previously, the PD would transfer it to the sheriff's department to receive the emergency medical dispatching, but only if it fell within certain call types: stroke, cardiac arrest, and some other cardiac calls. If it was a, say, a fall victim, that call would just be dispatched out. There would be no pre-arrival instructions or interrogation of the patient or family to find out what the issue actually was. The reason that's important, myself and any other first responder, sometimes a fall victim is a cardiac arrest, and we don't always capture that until you get on scene. And so now, instead of just that 10%, every single call that comes through the dispatch center is receiving that interrogation process.
Gotcha. So I got an email today on something called Genesis, asking me for a bunch of data, which seemed like it was an EMD kind of system. Are we integrated with that, or is that something else?
Yeah, that's actually something else. We have that in the consent. But Genesis is an evacuation program that's through OEM that helps us with evacuating certain pockets of the city. Should there be some type of major emergency? And that's something that we work in conjunction with law enforcement on.
My last question is kind of hypothetical, but there's 380,000, a little under 400,000 it's costing us. Who controls that number? I mean, I kind of remember the horror story of the animal shelter, and we thought we were paying for this, and the next thing we know, the costs kept going up. And so it all sounds good now, but what if next year it's 500,000?
Yes, sir. I understand. So there's different parts of that cost. I'll tell you what they are. So there's, of course, the annual expense, which you're aware of. So it's 362,000 is what it is. That's also comprised of fixed expenses. Those fixed expenses are made up of, I'll just give you a couple of them here, but it's depreciation on equipment, telephone services, copier services, ground maintenance, structure maintenance, some of those things. Then there's indirect costs, and those indirect costs are tied to the personnel, accounting, human resource component, legal expenses. And then the large part of that is the cost per call. And the cost per call is depend... Or the cost per call is the same. The number of calls we run every year will vary. So we ran 3,100 medical aids last year. We just did a feasibility study in the city. It says that we have a 0.6% increase annually, so we don't expect to see a lot of variance in that number. So that will be the only... Should be the only movement in that is, we might run less calls next year, and it will be less. We might run 100 more calls, and it will be 100 calls more.
So now you just led me back to my first question. You were getting 300 calls. Did you use that number as a base? Or now you're saying 100% goes through the system? Now there are 3,000 calls. That sounds like a factor of 10 to me.
No. So I think it's two different things we're talking about. So every call, every call that a Lompoc piece of equipment is dispatched for, we will get charged for. So if it's a medical aid, we will split the cost with the ambulance provider per call. So it's $78 a call. We'll split that cost on every medical aid. Any fire-related call, we will pay 100% of. The percentages that we're talking about, those are just the percentage of calls that received EMD service versus what they're receiving now. But there's no, like, because there's a variance, there's no increase in cost for that. That is the cost.
So the calls were dispatched on, so back to Jim's, windmills, would that be our cost, or would that be the jurisdictions?
Jurisdiction.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember. Just go through a couple of things. And again, I had the chance, joined Councilmember Bridge, go to take a tour of this fascinating, really cool facility, and learned quite a bit. I thought I knew quite a bit, but learned quite a bit more. I'm going to go through a couple of lists, or a list of things, just so you can kind of clarify for me, so I kind of make sense of a little bit of it. So we were talking about the two or three times that we go down Halama, but you mentioned the term move-ups. Talk to me more about move-ups, automatic move-ups. What does that mean, and how does that relate to Halama or Megalito or...
Yes. So the new system is built with something called automatic move-up. So every department has identified what they would call a core station. So whatever call, you know, whatever stations are, they're main stations and perhaps run the bulk of the calls. So when units are out of positions or committed out of their jurisdiction, the RFCC has an automatic plan through their CAD that begins to move units from surrounding areas and jurisdictions into those core stations to cover. So with your example, should our units be dispatched out to Halama, then there is a potential that we could have move-up services, although we would never commit all of our Lompoc resources to that.
Let's see. You've got lots of things. I won't go through everything, but something stood out to me. You said, or it was on the slide, no pre-arrival notes. Now, I kind of understood what that meant, and I talked to, you know, some of the staff that was trying to educate me on that. And again, the term going in blind, and we're talking about, you know, everyone knows, seconds matter, minutes matter. Going in blind, you have no idea what you're going into. If we're waiting for someone to arrive and assess, and then make a call, get transferred, and then they make another call, you still have no idea where the ambulance is. So talk to me about no pre-arrival notes and the danger of going in blind, and how this system is improving on that old system, from my understanding.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll tell you, our PD did a fantastic job at updating us to the best of their ability in the previous system, as our people were responding to calls. The difference is now with those pre-arrival instructions through the interrogation process with the patient, is we're getting those real-time. So if there's a firefighter danger or safety issue, or, hey, that person, it was a fall, but now it's a cardiac arrest, the enhancement for us now is our people can pre-plan that on the way into the call, and we can also ask for additional resources to get them en route prior to the arrival, and then finding out all of that information.
And then I just wanted you to go back over the numbers. You'd mentioned that the county has helped us out or come into town a certain amount of times. I think you mentioned like 100 and...
Yes, the county, just the engine has come in 176 times, and then we have given 133 times back. But also to Councilman Bridge's point, he's right, the cost sharing is based on jurisdiction. So if we are responding into the county area to help them, that cost is borne on the county.
Thank you for that. And the last thing, and I'm just putting this out there, when you go to this facility and you take the tour, you know, of course, they're going to show you everything that they want to impress you with, right? And there's all kinds of shiny things and important systems, and it's all important. But I think the thing that I... My big takeaway was how close in proximity really important people are. And when it comes to the city of Lompoc, we've had fires start on the hill from fireworks. We've had fires start in between the prison and Vandenberg Village, and everyone get really concerned. Just knowing that there is not only just a resource under one roof, on the same system, using the same language, using the same iPads, sending the same information, but there is a state representative literally right there, in an office, right next to the dispatch room, that can jump on the phone and immediately call and have a helicopter in the air, or fixed-wing aircraft from Passo headed our way. And the old system, they got it done. We usually got it done, but the fact that we can now shave off minutes in terms of efficiency and jumping on fires, everyone around us knows that fire danger is increasing. So for me, I was so impressed with how collaborative this system is, how helpful it is to Lompoc. And when it comes to a lot of worst-case scenarios, knowing that this county isn't waiting for a phone call to have our back, they know the moment a fire starts, they know a moment an issue is happening, and they can respond en masse. So to me, it does come with a cost. But from my estimation, there's no way we can afford not to do this with the benefits that we receive. Thank you for the presentation. Anybody else? Again, I do believe that we should probably run it by Lafco. I know we'd probably have to bring it back to discuss that.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I have our city attorney weigh in on that component, please?
Are you suggesting... Would you like us to just reach out to Lafco and present the issue and see if they believe that Lafco approval is required for the agreement?
I think it'd be for... What I see is lining up, especially with potential annexations coming in and stuff. And what I witnessed, like I said, with the Richards Ranch, arguing over two tenths of a mile, and who's going to be paying for them to show up? And granted, they have mutual aid over there in San Fran, the county between Orchid and everything. And just for the sake of sureness, we understand, I don't want to see you guys getting overburdened with into the county. And it is a much different response when you're running out, like I said, Highway One. You're running on Highway One quite a few times as well, with the accidents that happen out there, which the county's running into here. I know there's sharing agreements to go along in seeing what's out there. So, yes, just a simple sum, that they say everything's co-mosthetic, because I know we can't even run a water line or a sewer line out there without going through Lafco, and it seems like we're running fire trucks out there. And our territory has increased by 25, more than 25%. You know, the whole, basically, everything south of Parisma Road has become your territory.
Not jurisdictionally. We have not annexed that portion. So if we did, yes, then we would likely fall under that provision per Lafco, but it's an auto aid agreement, so jurisdictionally, the city does not own that.
It's not jurisdictional, but again, actions speak louder than words. The point of fact is, we're bearing an expense. It wasn't long ago, you guys were out all the way out Sweeney Road, the backside of Sweeney Road, here a few years ago, got stuck in the mud out there, and it was, you know, it's a tough, outside-the-city limits, a tough event going on in this. And I just want to make sure that we're not getting, you know, just run it by Lafco, they say everything's good. And I get it, we're not owning it, but we're providing it. And it is relatively a new component for us. I mean, we always had mutual aid. I just make sure that we're getting our fair share. And I don't want to see us getting, little Lompoc getting abused by, you know, the one and a half billion dollar budget the county has.
We can reach out to Lafco and get their opinion on that and provide it to the city council, and if you have any issues with their opinion, you can bring that back to council, and we can decide where to go.
This is a simple thing. I'm not disagreeing with your interpretation as well, but in seeing how it lines up at Lafco, again, with the annexations and a lot that's going on right now, I think it would also be, in the future, when our, you know, the potential thing with BODRA and stuff, what's going on with there, that we kind of get our cards in a row here. All right?
I have another question.
Oh, Councilmember Bridge.
Sorry. You just keyed my... The numbers that you quoted and what we're paying for is dispatch. So if we go out to Sweeney Road and spend two days fighting a fire out there, do we get reimbursed for that actual cost from the county, above and beyond the dispatch cost?
Yes, sir. So if we've committed resources, there's things called CFAA agreements that are with the state and fall under OES agreements. If we're to provide service in a different jurisdiction, which is exactly what our guys are doing right now out on 166, then those costs after... are doing right now out on 166, then those costs after 12 hours would be given back to the department that's providing the resources.
I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions? Thank you. Another presentation, Financial Service Manager, Robert Cross, front review of solid waste collection rates.
This was requested by the Utility Commission. I know the last year, there's been a lot of questions and comments regarding solid waste collection rates and specifically the multifamily rate and conversions. So this was presented at the last Utility Commission and so we're presenting it here tonight, just for some background. So City of Lompoc, we hired MSW consultants to perform a cost of service study and a rate study for solid waste division. And it was completed, the cost of service study was sent to the city on July 25th, 2022. It was then presented by our consultant at City Council on August 2nd, at which time it was referred to Utility Commission. Our consultant came back and and met, presented it at the September 12th and again on October 10th and again on November 14th. Then it was referred back to City Council at February 21st, 2023 for a public hearing to for the increase of solid waste rates. And that hearing was held on June 6th, 2023 and the rates were approved. It was 14.99%, 15, 15, 15 and 3%. Those rates were for the overall rates. There were a few adjustments in the first year that had to be done to get the rates in line with the cost of service for individual categories. From the cost of service study, the multifamily cost for rate section, the city is transitioning to a rate structure in which multifamily complexes are billed to the property owner based on the number and size of containers and the frequency of service, similar to commercial customers. Charging customers based on the actual size and number of containers and the actual frequency of service reflects the more appropriate nexus between the actual cost of service and the monthly charge. So that explains, that's why we were eliminating the multifamily rate. Then we mailed out Prop 218 hearings, our notices in April 2023. They went out to everyone with the utility bill that was enclosed and then everyone who was a property manager got a separate mailing. And that stated the city will continue its transition to a rate structure in which multifamily complexes are billed to the property owner based on the number and size of containers and the frequency of service, similar to how commercial customers are now billed. As a result, the per unit monthly amount previously charged directly to the remaining multifamily customers was phased out over transition period beginning on July 1st, 2023. At May 2023, we had 3,100 multi customers on the multifamily rate. May 2024, we were only down to 2,961, so only a couple hundred were transitioned the first year. As of this met past May, we're down to about 465. So I think that's why all the questions and comments, because we've we've limited down to almost, we've almost caught them or moved, transitioned them all now. So as of July 1st, 2025, the latest rate increase, which will be going out on bills this month, for a residential customer, a 65 gallon container once per week is 48.89 per month. For, this is a little small, but for commercial multifamily, the 65 gallon is 48, 46.84, yeah, 46.84 per month for one visit. We also, before transitioning any any of the properties, we sent a notice to each property owner and manager before we transitioned their individual location, reminding that on June 6th, the resolution established rates, include adjustments and the how the multifamily dwellings will be charged. We go, we show them what their bill will be, the number of 65 gallon containers or whatever, however many days wait for total monthly charge. And this was within 30 days of actually changing the rates. They all received the letter for for this. Lastly, so for example, if there was a property with five units on it, they were originally all were paying 28.63, all the residents were paying 28.63 for the multifamily rate. After the transition, if all five units had a 95 gallon container, they would be billed at $335 because it's 60.07 for the one for one unit, for one trip. With all the services under the property owner, the advantage for this is that the customers have to have, all have to have an account. But if the property owner puts it as in his name, he can have one large unit servicing the entire unit. So in this case, they could transition to a 450 gallon container and that would only be $148 per month. Individual accounts can't go in and bill for one fifth of a 450 gallon container, but the property owner, if it's in his name, he can do what's more efficient for him, more cost effective for him and more cost effective for the solid waste department. So you see is it'd be 148 instead of the five units paying 143. So that's the other reason for this change, again, so to make it easier for property owners to consolidate their their services. So, and that's all I had.
Councilmember Bridge?
Stay on that slide because I just want to understand that slide if I could. So the first one says when there were five units, it was 143.15.
Right. They're the multifamily, it was 28.63 for each customer.
There's a kind of a bullet there I may be missing is, were they going to go up to $60 apiece, $60.07 apiece if they'd have just kept the 95 and all had it individually?
The property owner would have gone to 330.
No, forget the property owner. If the individual units had just gone to the new rate, would it be $60?
The new rate is put in place when the property is transitioned to the property owner. So they stay at the multifamily rate until that transition and the property owner is then charged at the rate of the service that they're receiving.
What would happen if you just stayed, just like the first bullet? What would they pay? Just, we all changed our mind, we're not going to multi-unit, we just stayed with the five units all having.
They would probably be billed at the residential rate.
Which was?
Which was about the same. It was, sorry, 48.89.
Okay. So going back to that slide now, it would, it would have gone up then about 12 bucks.
About 20, 28 to 40.
48, showing 20 bucks, okay. But when we transferred it to the owner, it went up to $60.
Yeah.
So we had the convenience of billing a single place instead of billing in multiples and we added another $20 for that convenience.
It's, the multifamily rate was only in place until this was transitioned. We were phased, it was being phased out and it had to be phased out so that we could, so that we can.
Charge more?
No. It's charge appropriate to the service that we're being provided.
But you're going to have to be one container. Oh, I guess that's why you're driving it to one big container instead of five.
Right.
So you're trying to motivate that move.
It's, it's more cost effective.
And is that one visit a week?
Yes.
Okay. So intuitively, from my perspective, I understand what you're trying to do and I don't know, I'm against it, but behind these multi-unit residentials, those units always get overfilled. And the trouble is, you can never tell who's doing it because they're all sharing the same container. And you've driven the owner to now either absorb the cost, not you, I don't mean you, we have driven the owner to absorb that cost or put an incremental bill on their rent. None of this feels really good to me. I mean, I understand the economics of it, but it doesn't feel good.
So your first line up there, what size container were they having for 143.15?
The multifamilies are usually 65 or 95. I think it depends on the property, I'm not sure. But is it the same rate whether it's just whatever container they have?
So a property with five units, you said at that time they had 595s or did they have one 350 or one 450? What did they have?
This is just a hypothetical.
I got you, but so hypothetically, that property with five units, what kind of receptacles did it have? And at first instance?
65 or 95.
Could it have had a 450?
No, not for the multifamily rate.
Are you sure? I know several that had it for decades, had multi. I know a six, I know a sixplex that had a 450.
In the first example, it's assuming they all have their own container.
Okay, so what were you doing to a sixplex that had one 450 in that same example? What were they paying?
I'm sorry?
So as an example, what would that sixplex, what would you have been billing that sixplex five years ago or approximately with a 450?
If it's a multifamily, they would have been paying the multifamily rate.
Okay. So I, so we weren't doing 95s then. I mean, very few of the multiplexes add individual containers. They were mostly, you know, community cans, correct?
I'm not aware of that. I'm not sure.
I mean, I know back when I was on Utility Commission some 15 years ago, we asked to do an audit, you know, every can had a number on it and stuff and, you know, they couldn't do that. But I mean, I know most of all the multiple family units, housing units, three plexes had probably the smaller units, but most of the things in the five plexing greater had the larger containers. Like I said, I can think of a couple of sixplexes I know over here and there's a 20 plex on the corner there that had multiple, the big units. So the big argument that I'm getting from people is, is it was done without the landlord's permission. And granted, it was noticed, you did all of that correct, but landlords were tied in agreements with tenants and said, you will pay this and I'm paying that. And now all of a sudden this hit them and they're like, and granted, state law allows the pass through, but it's now another burden the landlord is doing to go and try to chase that money. And I guess that's the big thing is that we took away the will of the landlord to make that decision and even though contractually they had made that decision before. That's the big argument I'm getting from people. It's like, I didn't approve this, what's going on? I'm, you know, so they haven't even really, well, some did argue about the money, but it's mostly about you taking away their free will to make that decision.
And just, yeah, I remember, this was done two years ago. This is the third year of the five year increases.
You just started implementing a lot of them recently though, right? I mean, I started really hearing about this about six months, well, before that, nobody cared, but I mean, now they're, they're feeling it, you know? And I'm sure you've heard some of it too. I know you heard a lot of it, but.
We encourage them all to contact Solid Waste to see if there's a more efficient way of of handling it on their property.
And if, you know, I know you're doing that as well with the sewer, right? And I was the advocate before that because state law says the sewer is supposed to follow the water and in this case here, you're kind of doing much the same. But again, it's the free will component that people are very concerned about, the landlords, you know, they're being mandated, you're doing this now. So.
If I could just make a comment on that, if you could go back a couple sides, Bob, to the the dates, I don't think that we took the will away from the customer or the the We had many public meetings where those opinions could have been voiced and we had open meetings as you can see here. And I I don't remember any comments made during each of these meetings to this regard. And we did, we did disclose the change in all of the documentation. So I don't, I don't think that it's that we were doing a mandate without input, it's just that we didn't have the input at the time.
And I'm not saying that you did, you guys ample noticing, I watched, went to the Utility Commission and Mr. Cross did a great job there presenting as well and I was the only person in the audience, wasn't I, watching it as well? And I've got all these people foaming at the mouth and I'm like, hey, show up, you know? And usually until it starts affecting their pocketbook, then they start getting concerned and that's, that's what's going on, you know? And that's what they're feeling now. So, Councilmember Bridge?
I, just a couple of things on that last comment, I think it's, it's interesting that we would think because there's a one line on our financial service manager, Robert Cross, will write a review of solid waste, that the citizens that would be impacted by that have any clue that they are required or needed to come in here and participate. That's kind of why the elect does. So yes, we do the proper noticing and, but I just don't know if it's fair for me to say that if I don't have the people show up, that I'm not supposed to be concerned with what they complain about after the fact to me because I know, heck, I read these things and half the time I don't really know until I get here what we're going to talk about. So you mentioned alternative arrangements. Have there been any other alternative arrangements other than go get a bigger container and it'll be cheaper?
That's the primary suggestion, working with with customers.
Have there been any other?
No.
No, just that. So really the alternative they can come and talk to you about is they can, instead of having individual containers, they can go to one large container.
Or adjust the number of times per week, adjust the number of.
Frequency, which would increase the cost, not reduce it, right?
Or reduce, I mean, a bigger container at a less.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Regardless of the public meetings and the fact that we raised the rates to that point, many people don't pay attention. So now, I've been contacted by many people now, even though it's after the fact and we can justify what was done, but there are many property management agreements that are being violated right now that really caused some hardship for many, many of the landlords, for people that are in excess of 500 units. I know personally, they're having a hard time with this, you know, as far as making the owner responsible. It may work on your math, but it doesn't work on their math. So I understand how this works. So I really encourage the council to take a, let's take a harder look at this so that we can make the change to be more fair. Because, you know, the owner shouldn't be held responsible for something that they had a property management agreement with and the tenant agreed to it and all of a sudden it's, it's, it's just a, it's a hardship that they can't handle. There are many people that just cannot absorb that kind of rate increase without passing it on a certain way. They're, they're mandated when they do rent increases by only a percentage a year to stay within this. And I'm not sure. And I'm, I'm not sure that they, they could actually fold this into the tenant. I think it's something that they short end on this. And I've gotten, I've been contacted by people that own three, four, five, six, eight plexes. So I want us to maybe collectively get together and see what we can do to unravel this, to make it a little bit more fair. Thank you.
Councilor Ball.
And I certainly appreciate all of the comments that I've heard so far. And again, this is not disagree with any of that. But. And please take this with maybe a grain of salt. But over the last few years, we've seen rents go up in the area here and around the country. You and I, we all know they've gone up considerably, not 5%, not 10%, but in many cases, many tens of percents, 100% over time. So people that were paying 800 bucks, 900 bucks a month are now paying 1550, 1750, trying to scrape together money and trying to find a second job. So I definitely hear the concerns, but I caution this council, and again, it's nothing against landlords, but we're not here to just listen to what works best for landlords. And I'm not saying that's what you're saying. But we have seen quite a negative impact fiscally on a lot of people that live in this community whose rents have gone up a lot. And they haven't necessarily gotten anything more other than just keeping a roof over their head. So I'd love for us to be sensitive to anyone that gives us feedback. But there are a lot of folks here that are not being listened to on this issue. And that said, these rates have gone up for everyone. That's impacted everyone too. So I think that some of these questions are fair. But as far as I know, these rates are still lower than most in the area. As far as I know, our trash trucks, Mr. Quillen, you might correct me, but we're not, I don't think we're putting chrome on any of our trucks, new rims or anything fancy. So I know it's tough. I know that there's a lot of, I know the cost of service is a sticky term because there's a lot of people that can control that. But again, I hope that we're sensitive to every single person that pays a rate here. It's not just the landlords. It's everyone that has to pay. So let's be sensitive to that as well.
Can you go back a couple, somewhere there you had one where the staff was also able to make the decision of how many times a week or size of containers? Is it here somewhere?
Yeah, this one, it's, it's in the rate tables. It's for commercial and multifamily, the collections per week is, you know, one, two or three, or for the larger containers, you have to five per week.
Go to the, it was one of your texts. I don't know which number it was. Keep going, keep going. You had, you had it in there. Somewhere where staff can also determine the size of containers, right? They can. And the, and the amount, right?
Oh, the ladder maybe? I don't know.
Does staff make, so right there, I guess, right? And I guess that's the, the complexity of it is, is again, that you're, the property owner is not being able to make a decision for his own property. And I guess that's, that's where the argument is coming that I see. Granted, I'm not saying you didn't notice it properly and such, but they.
No, now they are able to. They can, property owners can set up whatever services are adequate.
So another question I had is what's next? You guys gonna put the electric rates in my name? You know, this, this is, this is a concern that's happening. That people are losing their free will. So. Councilor Vega.
So on the other coin, end of the coin here, as far as being an advocate for renters and owners. The tenants have signed an agreement to be responsible, many tenants to be responsible for their utility rates. So what this looks like is kind of a change in rhetoric between the city and the ability to collect the fees for everything. So I think that's what's happened here because the city had so many people pre-COVID or post-COVID that had money that was owed because of the payment arrangements that we had. The city was trying to recap and recoup the fees, which I understand. But to change it around and put a policy in place to make the owners responsible for the city's possible lack of being able to collect fees that were owed to them is one of the issues that I have here, okay? It's not about the rate increases. It's about the agreement of, and I'll just kind of look at you a little bit. As a renter, you know, those increases would have gone to the renter. So right now the renters are laughing because they think the owners got stuck, but it's going to turn around the other way. You know, there's people saying, well, you can do an arrangement, you can change the can, you can do this. And the city has a rhetoric of saying it's to the benefit of the landlord. It's not. It's really not. It's a basic responsibility that was signed by the tenant. When every tenant that signs a lease agreement is responsible for that lease agreement. It's like any contract. We've already seen things in places where we have contract compliance in question here with the city. And I think it's just a matter of when you change the game. And I, I just think it's unfair to take that power away from the owner and make the owner responsible. Everything the tenant came in here, gave a deposit, did everything there, but it lets the city off the hook on collection. You know, so I think that if you didn't pay, someone should go after you. That's what I'm saying. It's basically, you know, in rhetoric, you know, in general. But anyway, I think that's, that's where we need to keep that in context. It's not about the variable and changing the rate and the owner can do this and do that and change the rates and it's to their benefit because they can get a cheaper can. That's just a play on words.
Councilor Bridge.
This is probably for Jeff. I mean, we've talked a lot about this, don't we? Obviously, all have our feelings. This is not a decision-making agenda item, right?
That's right.
So the best we can do is ask it to be brought back as a decision-making agenda item?
Yes.
And would that be the council's concurrence?
Well.
I mean, we could talk about this all night, but I just did and I'm asking, do I have concurrence?
But if I may, I don't under, what decision would you like to bring back to the city council to consider?
Well, we can't make the decision tonight, so if I tell you what my decision would make, I'm kind of making the decision, right? I mean.
Well, staff needs to know what to bring back. So what would you like?
We could bring back alternatives to having the landlord paying the bill. Let's make it real simple, because that's really the core of the issue, I think. So could I get concurrence on that?
How about simply bringing back the staff report for action? Take the ability to take action, because you might have something else you wanted to take action on, right?
That's acceptable, Jeff's.
Well, they want direction, clear direction. What do we want it for?
To take action on potential changes to the solid waste rate charging structure?
Okay. That sounds really good. Can we do that?
Yeah, we can bring back a, definitely a discussion item. I mean, action may require doing Prop 218 noticing again.
Okay.
Can we bring it back as an action item also?
Yes.
To the extent that we are legally like able, yes, we can. And we will, as long as there's three votes to do that.
I'll give you a second.
I'll give you a third.
Okay, so we can move on.
You're in. Councilor Ball.
I was just gonna say, I'll, this is a little tongue-in-cheek. I'll save my council request for a discussion on rent control for the end. We're working really hard for landlords tonight. I hope that we can maybe work our interest too.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. All right, oral communications. You have three minutes now for oral communications.
Council members, mayor. 2019 was an incredible year for Lompoc. We got a new police chief. We had a new mayor elected. We opened our first cannabis dispensaries. It was also the beginning of a series of unsolved homicides in our community. Bobby Contreras, DeAndre Valery. Marlon Brumfield might have been one of them had the federal, had the, had the feds not gotten involved. The feds should not have had to get involved in an investigation with their community. Our police officers should have had this case taken care of before the federal investigators took over. They only took over because our police officers, our detectives, whoever was doing the investigations, had no leads. So we need to open up unsolved homicides in our community. We need to bring back a gang suppression unit to our community. I understand we have undercover officers that are focused on gangs. But we need a unit dedicated to gang activity, detectives dedicated to gang activity, officers doing patrols dedicated to gang activity. I moved here in 2010-ish. I remember seeing gang enforcement officers in our community. What happened? We lost the gang enforcement officers and gang homicides took over our community. Innocent, innocent people are dying as a result of these homicides. In 2019, a 16-year-old girl opened her door because she heard a disturbance in the parking lot outside her commu, outside her apartment. She was babysitting her younger, her younger brother and sister. She was hit by a stray bullet. That was only the beginning. Since, we have had countless homicides within our community unsolved. Do something.
Anybody else? Oral communications. All right, we'll close oral communications, move on to council request item number seven. Who's running this one? Robert Cross. Got lucky tonight, huh? We'll be nice to you on this one.
Good evening. This is a council request, I fiercely to review uses of the carb monies and the possibility of using it for rebates for customers. I think a lot of it flows into the staff report. There's about $5.5 million available. And we can, we can do rebates for customers. That's one of the alternatives. And the staff report gave an example of if we did a $200 rebate, it would be about $3 million or so of the carb funds. We have about 15,000 electric accounts. One thing we would need to clarify is to have the exact, the effective date of any type of action. I would recommend we do it as of tonight, anyone who has an account currently. But the most of the other information I think is in the staff report and it's an allowable activity. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions for Mr. Cross? Councilor Bridge.
It, we pulled an item out of the consent calendar. You may not be familiar with it, but just to get the question on the table. Was, was there any consideration of using carbon, carbon credits for those purchases?
There was not, I don't know that that, if those vehicles, if they're not electric, I don't know that we can use carb credits to purchase those vehicles. I would check with, I gotta, our electric regulatory analyst.
Hi, thank you, Stephen. I am the, our former senior administrative analyst. I'm now the electric regulatory compliance coordinator. So I handle, I manage the carbon credits and that reporting in our compliance obligations. No, that, so fuel switching, the, the carbon credit fund is meant to reduce carbon emissions. So that's, that's the ultimate goal by the state. We get these allowances because we're an electric distribution utility. So we get a set allowance every year and strategically, we sell them at the auctions every quarter. So we sell a quarter of our allowance every quarter and just to kind of get the average of what the, the market rate is. And yeah, the, it's supposed to help us offset the increasing obligation for us to go greener, go cleaner with our, our renewable portfolio. So we, we don't meet that currently. So we, we are looking at, and there's some language in there discussing or mentioning in the staff report, what our, our foreseeable costs will be if we stay status quo with our portfolio, our energy mix portfolio and what we, what we report to the state. So, but no, the fuel switching.
Who's gonna pay for those vehicles?
I would assume that comes out of the electric fund, so.
So it is an electric?
Yeah, that will.
So those vehicles are 20 years old that we're replacing?
I am not familiar, so I'm, I'm not.
Your staff report says.
Are you asking about the consent item that was pulled? I just want to clarify that.
I know, but I asked if they'd been considered and he's saying they can't be. And I'm, so I'm still on carbon credits. So those vehicles are 20 years old. I dare to say I could fairly easily engineer a greenhouse gas emissions reduction on 20-year-old vehicles. I don't think I'd have any trouble at all on that. I don't think I'd have any trouble based on the staff report of the increased deficiencies that those trucks are gonna bring to us that that would reduce the utilization. You had no problem with these kinds of analysis when we were doing the parks assessment. So I'd also like to point out that the lawyer has on their desk right now a study that they're doing that would allow potentially the carbon credits to be used to offset some of the solid waste activities. I think we're self-restricting ourselves on the carbon credit. Now, I'm, I'm a big fan of giving back money to the people. But I dare say the cost of those trucks is gonna be about 200 bucks by the time we're done per, per household. And that's about what we're gonna give back. So I'd hate to be penny wise and pound foolish on this. I, I fully support Councilman Starbucks' desire to resolve this issue and do once and for all what he's been championing for far too long to bring this issue up. I just would like to point out, when we make this decision, we're gonna immediately get that 200 bucks back one way or another. And it's really rare that we get the kind of money that we're talking about giving away or returning to the rightful owners who are gonna, again, just give it right back to us. So I just wanted to make that point on the, on the equipment, because it's, it's a one for one. So, thank you.
Councilor Starbuck.
Well, a couple of things. You know, one of the things I feel strongly about here is this is money that the people that own this utility have coming back to them. Everything staff's proposing is future things that future customers should buy. Why should existing customers give our carbon rebate to the staff to build a battery station? Let the people that sign up for the utility then pay for the battery station. It's, to me, it's common sense. Let's give something to people. How many times do we have the opportunity as a city government to, to give somebody something back? I've heard the term. We are CEOs of the city. This, this is true. Well, guess what? Dividends are out and it's time to pay back the frickin' stockholders. That's simple to me, you know? My way, I'd give all $5.5 million back to people. I'd be happy if this council would just vote to give $200 rebate. Buying trucks, that's gonna be built in to this vehicle system. Replacement. It's, we haven't budgeted because we haven't discussed it yet, but. It, it's, we haven't budgeted, because we haven't discussed it yet, but it's not a bad idea. Doing something with the landfill's not a bad idea, but that doesn't help the people last year that paid all their bills. It's, to me, it's a, you know, good job, Lompoc, you paid your bill. Even if you didn't and you're on the payments, maybe this will help get you out of that payment plan. I, I just don't see giving it back to staff for a future thing when future customers are gonna reap the reward off the back of everybody that's paid up till now.
Councilperson Go.
So, uh, again, interesting discussion, uh, appreciate it. I, I, I'll be honest, I tend to be the, uh, little more left-leaning quote-unquote liberal person up here, but shockingly, I, I find a lot of alignment with Councilman Starbucks on this one. And I know, don't spill your coffee, because, but let me explain. And I kind of gone through this and I researched this item and I thought, oh gosh, it starts out so political, it's so politically charged. You do this and if you are in this camp, you want chargers and save the planet and I, I get all that stuff. And then I looked in, I said, oh, look, PG&E, they give rebates regularly, a lot of entities, it's a regular thing to give rebate, so it's not even political. So then I thought, okay, well, I wanna be true to myself, so I thought, okay, well, the whole idea of this is to reduce carbon emissions. So I thought, hmm, what could we, what could, what could possibly do that here? Then it dawned on me, and this is where I align with Councilman Starbucks, if we gave $200 back to every utility customer, $200. You and I know this is a poor, hardworking town. Every $200, that's a really good day of hard work for a lot of people in our community. So I started doing math in my head and I remember the numbers that five, six thousand people leave our town every single day to go to work somewhere else. Environmental impact, turn their car on and go. If everyone had an extra $200 in their pocket, maybe a lot of people would spend one less day having to go jump in their car and hustle to drive off somewhere else to go to work. So in my mind, and I'll probably hear it from my environmentalist friends and everyone else, you should do this and that, but if our goal is to reduce the impact on the environment, let's put some money back in the pockets of people here, so they don't have to leave town to go to work. Let's put a little money in their pockets so they can maybe go two or three times to Halama with a family of four, pay their entrance fee and get Halama burgers and enjoy the environment that we have around us. So, what do you know, Mr. Starbucks? I think it's a great idea and you've got my attention and full support. You're welcome.
I'm really just sitting on the edge of my seat, I don't know what to say, I'm just-
Just can bite down on this tomorrow, I guess, here, so. So how much money would be left in the account while we're still, before we, not, we're not wiping it all out, I mean, Councilmember Bridge had a question on that, I mean, the, the trucks were, I know it's coming up next, 1.8 million. How much money would be left in the carbon credit account? Should we spend the three million?
So we got five and a half now, so we'd have two and a half million left.
So, there's, there's still some money in the kitty, and there's more coming, correct?
There, we are getting, bringing in about one, 1.1 million a year, I think through 2030.
Okay, so there'll, there'll be more, more coming, this will give people a break, so.
Well, that's great, just remember when we get to the city landfill and we need $10 million, but, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, well, so I, I did a little analytics and maybe Stephen could, uh, we, we checked out what, what was going on with that hospital, uh, charging station, alright? Because it's one of the things that's on the list here, is a charging station, right? And what do they charge at that charging station?
Uh, those chargers are free to use.
Okay, and what approximately was it, the cost to put in that station or the grant?
The, the entire project cost, I believe, was a hundred and sixty thousand for those two chargers, so four charging ports.
Okay.
And then we got a hundred thousand dollar grant, so.
She can really-
And another fifteen, so we, uh, net cost to the city was about forty thousand or so, forty-
Well, it's about a hundred and seventy-five going in, but anyhow, you, you got a really cool program, you can see how much is, uh, how much power it's actually made, day-to-day type of thing, right? So we did some, some calculations, you remember that?
I, I do, I do recall going over the, the data and statistics.
So how many years would it take to pay for that station if they were paying at the highest rate?
I, I don't recall getting that deep.
It's like forty-five years in the summer time.
We, we didn't necessarily get that, that deep into detail with it, but I, I'd love to bring up the numbers.
And then in winter, it was about ninety years to pay for that thing, if they were, but everybody at the hospital gets to charge for free, so. And to all those people out there that subsidize that charging station to go in there, um, just remember it's only gonna take ninety, ninety years in the wintertime, if they were charging to pay for that, so. Some of these things, we, we need to do all the mouth calculation out and make sure everybody's getting their fair share and such on that, but-
Definitely, I'm all for, you know, return on investment and making sure that it's a, it's an ample timeline, so.
And you, and the people might check, check it out, you still got access to that program, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Check out, he can, he can break it down to you and show you what those, what those things are doing for you.
I, I'm not a champion for charging stations.
I got you.
I am a champion for if you have a lot of money, it takes years and years to gather that kind of money. And it's not like the utility users paid for that, it was a credit from our generation.
They paid for it.
And we're gonna hear, I don't know, this year, next year, we're gonna, we're gonna hear that we've gotta spend $10 million on our landfill and the lawyer's gonna come back in three weeks and say, yeah, we could've used that money for the landfill. And I just, I'm-
Maybe they say you can.
Well, maybe, we'll see.
Alright, let me open this up to, thank you guys. Any more questions for staff? Wait, open up the public comment. Hmm, nobody. Alright, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. When we get back, anybody wanna make a motion, any more deliberations, arm wrestling, Councilmember Starbucks? I'm sure you got something you wanna say.
Anybody interested in giving the people three hundred? Okay, I'll settle for two if I can get it. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, go ahead and distribute, uh-
Can you have public comment or?
Yes. Why, you got something to say in the public now?
Yes.
That was him?
No.
That was staff. We're good.
Anyhow, I'll make a motion.
I'll second your motion to do staff's recommendation in here.
Alright, so make the motion.
Mayor, just as a technicality, it's, that is actually not the staff recommendation. Staff recommendation is just to consider whether to do that, so if Councilmember Starbucks wants to make the full motion, he can.
So the, the motion would be to adopt resolution sixty-seven, sixty-eight, print C's twenty-five then? That will give the $200 rebate and allow staff with two hundred, or two and a half million left.
So it's a, a credit? Not a, yeah. As per now? Okay? Let's go ahead and vote. Alright, net passes four to one with Councilmember Bridge voting no. Alright, moving on to written communications.
Nothing.
Alright, now item number five, coming back. Do you want me to open that up for public comment again, Mr. Jurney? We already took that, didn't we? We don't have to do it again, right?
That's right.
Okay. Item number five.
Did you want me to just ask questions? Would that be the most efficient?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, I was curious about the competitive proposal portion of the staff report, I didn't quite understand. It kind of read to me like we're not going out for competitive bids, we were using some methodology that allowed that not to occur? Did I misread that, or?
It's a cooperative agreement. It's a, it's a form of competitive bidding, maybe, um, I can speak to that a little bit. One of the options we have, um, for competitive bidding is to, it's, it's a, a way of piggybacking on other competitive bids, and so we use Sourcewell is one of the companies that we were, sorry, um, agencies that we use that will, it's a repository of bids that, or RFPs that have already been competitively bid, and then we can piggyback on top of those to be able to utilize. And it streams like, streamlines the, um, bid process without, um, eliminating the competition piece.
So can I repeat back what I heard, just to make sure I got? There's some business or organization that goes out and preconfigures a competitive bid environment and then you buy off of that schedule?
It's, it's more that, that there's a company that will, that holds record of competitive bids that have occurred and allows, it allows companies or cities or agencies to be able to piggyback off of those bids that have already occurred. So it isn't that Sourcewell is going out and requesting the bids, it's that they're a repository of, of competitive arrangements.
Okay. And of that list, you picked the most cost-effective?
Exactly.
Okay.
With, that falls within the parameters of what, what the, um, the solid waste department requires in this situation.
Okay. And, um, so it sounded like this was established a couple of years ago, it, it felt like when I read it, is that, is this just brand new or has this been in work for a while?
So we, we went out to, um, we got the, the financing, um, was in place, um, I, I don't have the exact date on it, I, I need to pull the staff report here real quick.
Well, let's just assume that financing was obtained prior to this year's budget.
Correct.
So is that like a rotating line of credit? You get to use it whatever you want? That's probably not the right technical term, but I think you-
No, it, it is specific to the vehicles that were listed on the, on the, um, lease agreement.
Okay, so was it-
And so there were, I believe, nine or ten that were included in, it may have been more, okay. Bob has all the specific detail on that, but, um, it, we list out, we go out for, for financing and it's, it also is an RFP and we get, um, the, the financing in place, and then as we are able to get the final delivery on these vehicles, because, you know, that's a lot of them take a year more to build, um, they, the, we release the funding for those, and so, um, I-
Okay, I got it, I, that makes sense. So is it a, uh, a fixed rate, interest rate on that, or is it, it's a fixed rate? What, do you know what the rate is?
I would have to ask, I would have to go back to my spreadsheets and look, I, I think that, I don't have it off the top of my head.
And is it a twenty-year payback, or?
It, it depends on the vehicle, it's usually based upon the life of the, each vehi- each piece of equipment, so if it's a, a ten, you know, some of them are ten years, some of them are fifteen, some of them are seven, um, I would have to, again, we have detailed spreadsheets that list out the schedules.
Okay. And do you have a feel for how much interest we're gonna pay on these loans? On this equipment loan, it's, we're borrowing about 1.4 mil or?
I, I don't have that off the, off the top of my head, but I can pull that data for you and bring it back.
I think it's probably close to half a million dollars over the life, um, but I could be wrong. Okay, thank you.
I assume this is the money in the 752 account? The restricted cash B of A financing? Is that, is you had 3.485 million in that?
Yeah, so, and I, I apologize, I, it's electric, not solid waste, I, so, I, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Is that the 752 account?
Yes.
In the restricted cash B of A financing?
Yes.
Is it that one? Okay, is it almost three and a half million in that account? You assume it's like a line of credit? Is that what it is?
It, it's-
Until you use it?
Until, it's identify, it's already identified what it needs to be used for, but yes, that's, it's a line of credit that has already been designated.
So what is the balance of this for in this account?
The rest was for the Streetlight Project, um, for those proposed a few, a couple years ago, I'm not sure what status of it is yet, but it's, it was in the financing.
Yeah, page 782, right? Just kidding, just kidding, I, I got you. Alright, thank you, um, so the public had a question about age of these vehicles, and reading in the staff report, uh, yeah, you're replacing one vehicle that was from 2006, two vehicles that are 2008 and 2010, and one vehicle that's 2005. And I had opportunity to talk to a couple of electrical guys and they're like, yeah, you know, some of the stuff doesn't work anymore, we gotta fight in the yard over some of those old antique stuff we still got, so.
Yes, and, and just to clarify, these, these are long lead items, these are gonna take eighteen to thirty-six months to deliver.
Yeah, I, I just wanna be clear, I have no question of the need of the vehicle, it's more a financing issue to me and, um, we're borrowing a lot of money and we're gonna pay a lot, you know, that's five hundred K in interest at least, so, but I have no problem with what you're getting.
Alright, very good, uh, thank you guys, motion to approve? Councilperson Bridge?
I'll second.
I guess to award the contract, blah, blah, blah. Yep? Okay, we got a bridge with a motion involved with a second, go ahead and vote. And that passes five zero, so. Yeah, those guys desperately need them. Alright, last line of oral communications, two minutes.
Hola, muy buenas noches a todos ustedes, este, mi nombre es Consuelo Lopez, soy residente de aquí de Lompoc y pertenezco a Lompoc Community Changers y vengo hablando por más padres como ellos que están acá, este, para pedirles por favor que pongan traductores al español, se la importancia de estas juntas, de cual podemos estar informados y las necesidades que tenemos como residentes aquí de Lompoc, que sea escuchado sobre todo.
Good, uh, good afternoon or good night. We are here to ask for interpretation services. As you can see, we have, uh, we are part of this group called Lompoc Community Changers, I work for Family Service Agency. This group is really to empower, um, these parents to make any changes in the community or their kid's school sites. Um, but this can't really happen if they can't come here, understand what's happening, or be able to speak to you all and you all can't understand them. I just gave you a perfect example, we have one of our leaders here present, Consuelo, who talked to you in Spanish, uh, very briefly, she also asked for interpretation services because she wants to be able to come here and speak to you all where she can understand you and you can understand them. Um, and it's only fair that because the Lompoc community is prominent of Latino community, that we are being noticed as well. Um, I know you all have mentioned before providing, um, title at the lobby, but I think it's very unfair to separate the community, they should be present in here with everybody else, um, whether that's, uh, receiving interpretation service with an actual interpreter, or I know you all have mentioned perhaps, uh, little devices, I don't know how well that works, but maybe you all can help us look into that, um, because we are here of a couple of parent leaders who wanna come here and speak to you all, um, hopefully soon, uh, so keep an eye on that, but yeah, not only just us, but the community of Lompoc who might be scared to come and speak to you all, uh, but maybe providing those resources, those, the services, um, they might be able to come here more often. Thank you.
Karen Hellenstein, lifelong resident, born in Lompoc, native. I attended a C4 meetings where they used those little devices. They were training people to use those devices. You were there. You were there, Jeremy. I remember, remember back in February of 2024? Yeah, that's interesting. It's nice that we're inviting people from other places to participate in government, like lifelong resident Jaime Morales, James Morales, the resident of 438 South J Street and 215 West Locust. When I attended the meeting in January of this year, had you just come on? You passed resolution number 6729, and Mr. Morales would like that recalled and re-agendized. And then we could receive an update on it, and then he can have public comment, because he was not aware of what happened. Can we do that? You can respond later. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Any more public comment? At that, we will close public comment, bring it back to council, council comments, and meeting reports, and requests. Councilmember Bowley, you go first?
Well, I was going to look for council support to discuss rent control, but I'll let you guys off the hook this time. Maybe next time. But I did have one small request. I hope there's openness to it. I had a conversation, and I was reminded about this, this issue in our community, but I had a conversation with some community facilitators and a couple of concerned parents about the issues surrounding tobacco use, access to tobacco, access to cannabis products, enforcement, all of those things. I know it's a big challenge, and we're overwhelmed with lots of other issues, but it is, it is of concern, and it's becoming more concerning to me just because I'm relatively new parent, and it's something that you start to think about. So just seeing some comparisons of how our city rates in comparison to other cities around us, like Guadalupe, or Santa Maria, or you name it, when it comes to regulating smoke shops, or giving permits, or undercover enforcement, there's, we don't score that well. That said, everything comes with a cost and with a price, so. But I also learned that there is opportunities, there is access for us to get federal and state grants to help us with some of this work. Either way, I would just have a council request that we have an opportunity to receive a presentation, either from the county or whoever's in charge of that issue, to just talk about it with us, and to maybe challenge us to see if there's some council actions that we might take to improve the outlook of that issue in our community when it comes to access to tobacco for underage kids, some of that. I think that's, it's a worthwhile discussion, and at the very least, I'd love to learn a little bit more about it. So my council request is that we get a presentation, learn about it, and see if we can make some updates.
I'll give you a second. You have a second? Got a third? There you go. Councilmember Bridge with the third. Anything else? Oh, okay. Councilmember Vega?
Thanks. I, I have a council request also. Regarding translation services, it's really important, especially we see, we, we talked about rate increases and transparency that we talked about tonight. There's a lot of people here that probably didn't understand what happened regardless of the meetings. So I think today, it's never been more important to provide public translation services at our government meetings here locally especially, from a public safety announcements, and communication between city governments, all city citizens affected by all the decisions that are being made by this council. It's imperative that we provide these services as a city government for full transparency. Done a little bit of homework. People have provided me with equipment prices and things like that, that we can provide some sort of equipment that will allow them to be able to, to understand what's happening at the council meeting. I guess my motion here would be to find out, maybe city staff can tell us for translation services. I'm pretty sure there's some funds available that we can use. So my motion would be to have city staff possibly come back with funding mechanisms for some of this equipment. We're not talking about a lot of money. You can do a lot of this for probably a couple thousand dollars, you know what I mean, to get started as a pilot program. You may, you know, there's probably prices all across the board. One of the questions that was asked of me was, yes, if we could provide the hardware, like sort, sort of like headsets or something that can be used while they're at the council meeting, we could put a pilot program together to see how this works, you know? Yes, there's closed captioning, possibly in the lobby, but a lot of people would like to sit here and actually pay attention to the meeting instead of reading a closed captioning and hoping you understand. One of the other questions was, on a two-way street, I'm just going to throw this out there. My motion's already been made. It's made basically for city staff to come back, possibly for funding mechanisms that we could provide this equipment, and we can move forward with something like that, provided the councils are okay with that. I think the other way under the, the, the street would be, the other end. They said, "So, we come here and we understand, but on the other end for translation. Who's going to answer back for feedback as far as on the council end?" Okay, so if we have to translate or we have to come back. So these are things we need to look at. So that's my motion. It's kind of a long-winded motion. I think the funding is important, if the city can tell us what we can use as far as funding and how much we have available that won't affect anything else as far as in a negative manner as far as public safety. I think this is public safety. I think it's imperative that they not be lost in the, in the shuffle here of our decision-making process. So I'd like a little support on that if I could, guys.
Councilmember, I'll give you a second? Yeah, absolutely. Support that 100%. Let's definitely have the conversation. And again, just throwing it out there, we only meet, you know, our council meetings are first and third Tuesdays of every month for a couple hours, sometimes a little longer. But I'd love to know, like, you know, how much would it cost to have someone?
Yeah, and the equipment from my little bit of homework here, the staff may be able to give us a little more insight. They're used to buying equipment and things. It was, it was pretty affordable, you know? There's not like a huge market for that there. So the equipment could be, it's not invasive, so it wouldn't be something where, as far as if it was an earpiece, it wouldn't be going in someone's ear and be a safety hazard or anything like that. So I think it's, it's time. So Councilmember Bowley, give you a second on that. Councilmember Starbuck, give you a third on that.
Yeah, the third. I figured if we could afford all the money to buy all these new TVs and little consoles and stuff like that, we could come up with some kind of a small interpreter here.
So if we could have that come back in a timely manner, not while I'm still alive, that'd be great, you know? Like, I don't know what you guys can do. What's that now?
You good?
Yeah, I just want it to come back in a timely manner. Thanks. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Councilmember Bridge?
So I'd like to go back to the agenda items. If possible, coming up on the 19th, we have this general plan and zoning code amendment. It says it's a public hearing. Would it be possible to get that before Friday of the afternoon, before the meeting, so we could review that and see what exactly we're having a public hearing on? Seems like that's probably already at least 95% done, if it's scheduled to be on the agenda. It's item three in the upcoming.
Councilmember Bridge, you're talking about the future agenda list. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Up on the top. And you're asking for staff to provide you the staff report the Friday before?
No, I'm asking if we could get it before the Friday before, because-
That's always my goal.
Well, I'm sure, but in this case, that's going to be a several hundred-page document, and if we already know it's coming up, it seems like all the work must be done by now. If it's not, then I would ask we delay it until we can be provided an advanced copy of a several hundred-page document. Am I misinterpreting what's on this piece of paper?
You have a twenty talking about?
Yeah, we'd have to check with our planning staff on that. I'm not sure exactly.
Well, that's fair, but if we're, if we're not able to give us at least a week on that document, I'd like to get that delayed, then. I just can't absorb that much in a weekend. I'm sorry. On the one, one-
Councilmember Bridge, just before you move forward, are you talking about both of the public hearing items? Do you want both of them moved forward if you can't, if they can't come to you sooner than that?
I, I think I've seen the safety update element. It was, it went through the planning commission, and I think, I personally think I'm okay. But the general plan is a big document, and I just need time.
Thank you.
Yeah. One, two, three, four. The fourth one down, can you tell me what that's chapter 45 of, so I can go out and read it?
It's the procedures manual that you received a-
I didn't see a chapter 45 in that document. I'll go back and relook, but-
Right, right. So the procedures manual that was provided to you was the most current one available from the city manager's office.
But it didn't have chapter 45?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, we have a council open action to review the revised chap- how do I do that?
That's where that chapter goes. Chapter 45 has already been, we have it elsewhere, but it's just not-
Could I get a copy of that?
Sure.
Okay, probably everybody's going to want it if we're supposed to-
Everybody's had it before.
Oh, it's just me? Okay. Cool. Let's see, la- last session, I asked about the analysis on the wastewater temperature, and I was told, I thought it was closed, and I was told it wasn't, but I don't see it on here anymore, so.
It's on page two?
Ah, my mistake. I apologize. All right. And then, yeah, I wanted to mention that the Lompoc, folks in Lompoc City have had, fed about 5,000 meals to the firefighters in the, in the, they call it the Gifford Fire. So, next time you see the Glazes team, congratulate them, because they jumped through their butt to get that done. And then, my last request, and I guess I need council concurrence on this one. I, I'd really like to see a maintenance plan on the Ryan Park restrooms. It's, I know I've brought this up before, and the answer is, it's $2 million to get a new one or a million, but, you know, it reminds me of a Tom Petty rock and roll song, "We don't need to live like a refugee." That restroom is sad. And even if they could replace the front doors, or, or give me some kind of plan on, on how, or get the council some kind of plan on how to make that thing so you don't feel like you're dirty when you walk in it. And can I get concurrence on that?
Is that a motion?
It's a concurrence. I don't-
Yeah, I'll give you one.
Okay, thank you.
I'll give you a third.
Thank you.
Can we get a plan for something more than just replacing the doors? We should burn the whole thing?
Well, I'm assuming we'll get a maintenance plan, and maybe every two weeks, we'll go in and fix it. Okay.
Is that good? Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Quick question. We had the council handbook in our packet. There were some changes, but maybe not all the changes. Do we need to approve this next time or something like that?
It was just updated with the names on there. That's it. That was the change.
I, I thought we were going to review that, and last time, I was confused, and it was going to be brought back to the city attorney. Does this need to be agendized, changes that you're in here?
I didn't have that in my packet that I'm aware of, but if it's just changing the name of the mayor and the council members, that does not need to come back.
So there was also, we have the benefit is inside here that's not inside this one? As one of the groups that participate, the joint JPAs or whatever?
I'm sorry, there isn't one in my packet.
Pardon?
Well, the last-
Oh, there isn't, okay.
The last session we had, this had-
Jeff, the only thing I did was update the names. That's it.
No, well, that doesn't need to come back then.
I didn't do anything else.
But the last session, we had it on the agenda, and it was, you informed me that it was my January request, because I had changes to the handbook, and that it was my failure for not being prepared, and-
No, the handbook that you're talking about is for the commissions. This is for the council.
It says, okay.
City council handbook.
So we, we also have the nonprofit group, right? So it didn't get added in here, so does that need to be agendized if you're adding something like that in there, or update? What is that, what do you call that? It didn't get done, I just wondered.
Again, the only thing that was updated-
Stacy's telling me that that was not a change that was recently made, so.
I didn't, I didn't make any changes to the names. That was the update.
But I'm saying it's not in here. The new nonprofit that started a couple of years ago?
Right.
Oh, if you want to add, if you want to add that to the council handbook, that would need to come back to council, yes. But, yes, if you wanted to add that, that would need to come to council, too.
Think you're going to update it, you probably should add things that are missing, right?
Well, the update was not for staff to do. Staff.
All right, so I have a council request. So a year ago, the council did discuss the PCI, the pavement condition index, and mechanisms to try to do something, and then nothing happened. We mentioned it before during budget about potential tax measure to get out here, because we know we're, we're sitting on 70 or 80 million dollars worth of asphalt and sidewalk projects, so I thought it would be on the future agenda list, but I didn't see it on here anywhere. Is that on there?
I don't, I, I apologize. I don't remember a council request for that, so-
Yeah, so let me, let me make it now. Let me make, because I did, and he gave me a second, jumped up and down, and, and we had it over here. But anyhow, let's, let's get that on there. There are rumors that somebody else is trying to put another sales tax on. If they do that, then we won't have an opportunity. And I don't know how that works, if it's first in line, or most votes, or what happens. But can we bring something back with that on a sales tax measure for asphalt? City attorney?
You're requesting an agenda item to consider adopting a sales tax through the voters for special tax for street purposes?
Streets and sidewalks, addressing that. Open it, so we can-
Yes, that is possible.
Get into it, okay? And my suggestion that, because it's no rumor the county's looking at a one-cent tax. And I think we only have a one and a quarter left, or something like that. If they get a one cent, then, city attorney?
We can address all that in the staff report if you get-
Very good.
Are there three votes to do that?
One here, two, three, four? He doesn't want to do it.
No, no taxes.
No taxes, all right. Four of us anyways. Very good. And, let's see, with that, we will adjourn to regular council meeting, 6:30 PM, August 19th, 2025.